Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get, we're gonna go ahead and get started, maybe. I'd like to first call on Pastor Ken Maxey to, with the Grace Calvary Chapel, to lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much for letting us do this, and appreciate everything that you guys do here, and just want to let you know that on behalf of the Christian community that we pray for you, pray for you all often, and I know that this takes time away from your families, so thank you for all that you guys do. Let's pray. Lord, we come to you, we know that your word says, "To trust in you with all our heart, and not to lean on our own understanding, but to acknowledge you and to submit to you, and you will make our paths straight." And, Lord, tonight, we come and we invite you into this time, and we trust, Lord, that you will lead us and guide us, and lead these men in their decisions that have to be made. And then the discussion that's gonna take place here, Lord, we pray that you would be among it and be within it. And, Lord, we pray that you would guide them and allow them to make wise decisions this evening. Lord, we also acknowledge that we have no authority, that it only comes from you. And so, we honor you and give you all the glory tonight, and we invite you here, right now, in this place, to be with us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Kraus.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Grimm.
Here.
Josendale.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Randolph.
Here.
Schaumburg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Trout.
Here.
There is a quorum present, I'll call the meeting to order. There are no objections, the minutes from the regular meeting held April 3rd, 2023, at 5:30 PM will be approved. Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. I'd now like to ask John Bowser and Kevin to come up to the podium. It's not very often that I get the opportunity, or any of us get the opportunity, to congratulate someone on the milestone that we're celebrating tonight, 50 years of service. St. Joseph Missouri Achievement Award, presented to John Bowser. In recognition of 50 years of employment with the city of St. Joseph, John Bowser is the SIMR Project Facilitator for the Public Works and Transportation Department in St. Joseph, Missouri. He started his career with the city working in the police department garage. John has been instrumental in public works, permitting process and encyclopedia knowledge of the city's code of ordinance. John was a street lighting supervisor for many years. He has a great attendance record and rarely uses any sick or vacation time. John worked with the former superintendent Gary Lefton on developing computer record-keeping systems and procedures that are still in use today. He has been the city liaison and longtime advocate of the Missouri One Call Utility Locating System. He has facilitated and administered the SIMRIR radio system for many, many years. The mayor and city council expresses their appreciation to John for his time, efforts, and dedication to this employment with the city. Presented by the mayor, John Josendale, and the city council on the 17th day of April, 2023. John Josendale, Mayor. With that, I'm going to ask the manager of the department to present a flyer and key to the city to John for his time and efforts. You can read them, too.
This is presented to John Bowser in recognition of his 50 years of dedicated service to the citizens of St. Joseph, Missouri. Presented by Mayor John Josendale, April 17th, 2023. Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Want to say something?
We have a second Special Recognition Award tonight for the Bishop LeBlanc High School Girls Basketball Team. Allow us, Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Trout to present that.
All right, this is a Special Recognition Award, Bishop LeBlanc High School Girl Basketball Team, to recognize and celebrate the team's athleticism and effort, as well as commitment to practice and hard work as they completed and placed second in the Missouri Class II Championship, March 11th, 2023, in Springfield, Missouri. The LeBlanc High School Girls Team, which includes Katie Beam, Kelly Beam, Kendall Cathcart, Kaylee Conard, Riley Conard, Bensley Fox, Ella Frazi, Carla Harden, Daisy Harshman, Claire Heater, and those are people that I went to school with, your uncles and aunts. And Mr. Trout's a class of '79, so he's next.
To include Shay Lewis, Emma Rains, Mariah Rocha, Jasmine Sperry, Tatum Stutter? Stutter, that's close. Now, I lost my place, did I?
Graceful.
Graceful. Harper Wright, Kaylee Ziesel, head coach and athletic trainer, Jackie Stelton-Pole, assistant coaches Stephanie Hughes and Mike Ziesel, and manager Ally Welter. They had an impressive 28-4 season. The city is honored to pay tribute to LeBlanc High School Girls Basketball Team, whose dedication is an inspiration to the residents of this community. Presented by the city council on the 17th day of April, 2023. John Josendale, Mayor.
Come on up, girls.
Y'all wanna come up to the...
And these don't have names, so we'll just give each of you one.
Jackie, while they're getting an award, would you like to say something for the team?
These girls, they definitely worked very hard this season, and we appreciate this recognition by the city council. They were definitely deserving of this honor, and each and every one of these individuals have put forth a lot of effort, so we just greatly appreciate you guys for recognizing them.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on, gentlemen. Is there a motion to accept the agenda published? Councilmember Davis, second Schultz. Who's second? Councilmember Davis made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Schultz, to accept the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Here is 9-0. Clerk, please read the public hearing.
Public hearing on the Fourth Year Annual Plan for the City's Strategic Use of Available Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds Proposed for Fiscal Year 2023-24, beginning on April 7, 2023.
Members of the public, speakers' cards are not required in order to speak during a public hearing. This is the first call for the public hearing on this issue. If anyone wishes to speak on this issue, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the clerk's record, limit your comments to five minutes, and wait till, to begin speaking until you see the timer on the display. This is the second call for the public hearing on this issue. This is the third and final call on the public hearing on this issue. Seeing no other public comments on this issue, the public hearing is now closed. Clerk, please read item number five.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for the property located at 925 Fifth Avenue for use as a meeting hall, as requested by Patrick Rigg on behalf of Paris Entertainment, LLC.
Members of the public, speaking cards are not required in order to speak during the public hearing. This is the first call for the public hearing on this issue. If anyone wishes to speak on this issue, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the clerk's record, limit your comments to five minutes, and wait to begin speaking until you see the timer on the display. This is the second call for the public hearing on this issue. Oh, okay.
My name's Patrick Rigg. My address is 19779 Red Oak Boulevard, St. Joseph, Missouri, 64505.
Go ahead.
And I have a handout for you guys. I sent a PowerPoint through, but... All right, well, good afternoon or evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'll be real quick on this, within the five minutes. As you're getting the deck, I'll just kind of take you guys through it. The first slide is just a little background on the idea of it. Paris Hall, actually named after my youngest daughter in the eternal fight between my kids to all want a company named after them. It was my youngest's turn at this point. But Paris Hall, owned by myself and my wife Sonia, who's here with me right now. We moved here five years ago to St. Joe, started purchasing a rental property business, and we've been doing that for five years, under the name PMR Properties, where we basically revitalized and renewed some of the older vacant boarded-up homes and turned them into affordable housing within the community. So, the third slide, as I go through, the idea and the concept came about for Paris Hall when we were looking to do a company party for PMR Properties. And Sonia and the girls in the office, they called all over, Room 108 Benton Club, the Country Club, beautiful, beautiful places, but all of them either required memberships or were so expensive to get, and they were very hard to get. On the opposite end of the spectrum, there's places like the VFW Knights of Columbus, which are very fine, clean places, but there's really no frills to them. So, her concept was to offer more of a high-end, family-focused experience without kind of pricing the average person out of being able to rent a facility. So, if you flip to the next slide and the next view, it's just pictures of what the property looks like, what we've done to it. You can definitely see the detail and the attention for what we're looking for in it. The first slide is a picture at nighttime with it lit up. The other one is during the day. The next slide is the entryway when you walk in to the lounge. It's real wide-open lounge area that kind of flows into a lounge where people can sit with couches and tables. The next slide kind of shows that same lounge area, and then it kind of passes through to a kitchen, which, again, it's a large, open area for people who are looking to prepare food for, you know, a retirement party, an anniversary, kids' birthdays, whatever that function may be. The next slide shows kind of a dance floor. It shows the bar area, three-sided bar. It's all backlit behind, and there's illuminated running boards down below that, you know, for like a wedding or a birthday party, that you can change the colors kind of as to fit the mood. After the bar, there's a dance floor and a stage area. So, it's a large, open area for kids to run and play, people to gather. A little stage if somebody has a DJ or something like that. Plus, you can see it has the stage or the dance floor area has the corresponding lighting with the bar area that you can sync up. The next one shows the restroom facilities. We have a total of four restrooms, men, women, family. The family room has an infant changing area for babies, you know, within the family restroom. The next slide shows like geared more towards, you know, for weddings and anniversaries and stuff like that, like a women's lounge area and dressing area where we got mirrors and couches, kind of a laid-back area for where ladies can get ready for the night, get their hair done, makeup, stuff like that, and just hang out. So, in summary, in my last 30 seconds, obviously, it's our objective to offer a premier, family-friendly place where people can get together, feel like it's a very upscale place, but not necessarily break the bank on budget-wise. And something that's open to everybody. There's no membership requirement. Very simple.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
In the photographs that were provided to us as council, those pictures towards the end, are those concept images? Or is that work that's already been done?
No, these are actual pictures.
Okay. Do you know the zoning in that area currently?
It's zone commercial right now.
Okay. And then, so this work has been done already in advance of the conditional use permit. What would you use this property for if you don't receive a conditional use permit?
That's a good question. That would be something I would have to figure out on the fly.
All right, thanks.
I've got a couple of questions. Number one, have you talked to the neighbors of the property?
I personally have not. I do know that one of the gals in our office has.
Well, I think one of the problems we have right now is communications. People don't talk to each other. That's kind of the world we live in today. And there's a lady, I think she's gonna be speaking, who's very concerned. She has a joining property to this. Concerns because across the street, the Johnny Rains deal on St. Joe Avenue, I've got lists of police calls. And obviously, it doesn't look like that kind of venue, but, I mean, how is she to know what's going on?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off. So, obviously, the venue or the, I think it was an after-hours club or something, I wasn't even aware of it. I don't even know the place until we started doing this. I was, but I've heard a million stories from everybody. So, I think unfortunately, we're kind of getting branded by proximity. Just because we are kind of across the parking lot from that facility could be further from what we're trying to achieve. We're not a nightclub, we're not a bar, we're not an after-hours facility. We're actually the complete opposite of that. It's more of a place for kids, families, weddings, anniversaries, people to get together, but have a nice place. Again, you guys all have the handout. You see the finished work in there. All that finished work, as Mr. Davis, you pointed out, you asked if that was concept, I said, "No, we've already put all that money into it." So, when you go that far in a project, the last thing you want to do is you get your blood, sweat, and tears into it. So, the last thing you want to do is see a bunch of punk people come in and just tear it up and ruin it. So, that's absolutely the last, the last thing we would ever be looking at doing.
Okay. Also, some concerns, too, because there was, it's my understanding there was quite a bit of work that was done to the place, and there was never any permits issued on the property. I believe the city had to come and put a stop-work order on that.
There was a stop-work order, but we actually, prior to the project taking place, we went down to City Hall, and we told them about the project. We told them the scope of the project. There was a little bit of a miscommunication on what needed a permit and not needed a permit, because, and again, city by city, things are different. But the only thing in the entire scope of the project that was tagged for a permit was that we built up a bar area, non-structural, two-by-fours and drywall. So, we've had the city inspectors in there. We've been working with them for the permits. So, but we did, prior to us even starting the project, we came down here. And once again, and I will say, it's like anything, when you do a construction project, sometimes, you know, a little kind of becomes a little, little, and it just kind of moves down the road. But like I said, if we were trying to hide or mask anything, we wouldn't have approached the city prior to.
I understand, and I appreciate that. Have you ever, have you gotten permits for...
Yeah, absolutely. And in fact, the day that the red tag was on the door, we phoned, we phoned the inspector who tagged it, and we sat down with him. We talked through the project. It came out that there was only one permit needed. It was, like I said, it was for a bar, which, to me, non-structural bar, I mean, I wouldn't even believe that that was something that would have needed a permit. But once again, we've been working with the city to have that all corrected. We've had the fire department in there. We've had other building officials in there, and we've been going through all the right channels in that way to get everything taken care of.
What's the capacity of this building?
Right now, after the fire department inspection, they rated it for 100.
Okay. What's your parking capacity?
We have roughly 20, 25 spots existing there now. We are in conversations to purchase the two lots across the street from there. So, with those lots, we would have capacity of over 50, 60 slots.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification of your comments. So, you're in conversations to purchase it. You have not purchased it?
Well, sure, it's kind of, come back to your original thing, how far, you know...
I just want to make certain of the exact things of what is being occurred, what's been done.
We've been in conversations. We have a price. We have a price that we've gone back and forth. But obviously, as to, just to your point, is if the business, the building has to be repurposed, it may be repurposed to something that doesn't need more than five parking spots, you know? So, obviously, if it's an event center and there's additional parking needed, we've already sought that out as an alternative to give us more than ample parking.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I've got a question. Patrick, what is the hours of operation gonna be, then? Do you have that set in stone yet?
No, there is no specific hours of operation, because we're not a social club, we're not a bar, we're not, you know, we're not serving alcohol, we're not doing any of that stuff. So, it's gonna be no different than than like the VFW, the Knights of Columbus. So, when somebody rents it, it's my belief, though, city code says that it has to be done, finished, and out by midnight.
By midnight, okay.
Yeah, and I believe that's per order, you know, per order of the city.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just have one. Have you taken into consideration some lighting around that area and disturbance with the neighbors, or...
We have not done anything yet with exterior lighting, but I mean, I'm fully open to the idea. I mean, we have lighting on the building, per se, but I think you're talking a little one step further, like maybe illuminating the parking lot?
Well, necessarily that, but necessarily disrupting the neighbors that are right next door with lights that are on at night?
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you were going the other way, actually looking at us to increase the lighting. If you look at the slide number, I think it would be four, if you look at it at nighttime, it's very muted. I think it's four, right? The one that says exterior. So, in my opinion, the lighting is not something that would glare in or disturb somebody. Give me one second. Say it again. Oh, okay, it wouldn't glare in or disturb somebody. Now, if, in fact, it ever got to the point that that was an issue, there's nothing that would stop us from putting up like a six-foot privacy fence, too. You know, I mean, or, and actually, more, I probably shouldn't even say it, more than lighting, the purpose of a privacy fence would maybe behoove the situation more for noise, you know, as people walk to their cars and stuff like that. But I don't think lighting would be an issue.
I have one additional. And just again, a clarification, you said that you wouldn't be serving alcohol. Is that to say that it won't be alcohol provided on premises?
Well, we're not getting a liquor license. Now, obviously, as just a, obviously, if it's a kid's birthday party, I'm gonna believe not. But, you know, if it's a wedding, an anniversary, a retirement party, obviously, people are gonna, you know, we have a bar there, but we don't...
Right, so there's a bar, there will be alcohol on site.
But we're not, we're not providing it, we're not staffing it or stocking it.
Right, but there will be, will be provided if the person who's renting it wants it, it will be there, right?
Potentially, but not being a fool, I would tell you. It's very, very, very rare that there's any kind of a get-together where there's no alcohol, you know?
Sure, just making sure we're, I'm certain of what we're hearing.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Another question. I understand Saturday night, you had an event there?
I had people there, but it was not a Paris Hall event, no.
Okay, okay. Because I understand, too, that there are some issues with the neighbors as far as cars coming and going, lights flashing in and out. And I think that's a concern, you know? And that's where my first question was, have you ever had a discussion with your neighbor? And that's, I think that's pretty important. I know she's here.
Okay.
Okay, this is the third and final call for the hearing on this issue.
Hi, my name's Casey Salgado. I live at 1704 Bell Street in the 03 zip code of St. Joseph. I'm not gonna have five minutes. I work for PMR Properties and have been going through, I've been the person speaking with most of the people downstairs at City Hall, pulling the permits as they've come up. Again, as Patrick said, we didn't, our understanding, when we first sat down and pulled the conditional use permit, was that the work that we were gonna have done didn't necessarily need a permit. We did build the bar off of a wall that was already existing. And once that red tag was put on the wall myself, I contacted Jim Sherman the same day. I wasn't able to get a response on the phone, so I came down to the office and had a discussion with him. I apologize if my voice is a little bit shaky. I have a condition called essential tremors, and it acts up when I get a little nervous. So, I have spoken directly with Brandon. I have spoken with Jim Sherman several times. I'm the one that met the fire department and Michael from the City Hall to do our walkthrough inspection. When they came and did the inspection, there were a few other minor details that they asked if we could fix. Not necessarily that would bar us from obtaining this permit, but a few things that they asked us for. Our team has already begun those processes with, of course, first contacting Jim Sherman at City Hall to make sure that that wouldn't go against our no-work order. That being said, we also had the inspector, Michael, come back a secondary time before we asked for another inspection[1664.88] That being said, we also had the inspector Michael come back a secondary time before we asked for another inspection to check our work to make sure it was gonna be up to city code. I myself have als- also gone over to the neighbors. I knocked on their door one afternoon, a couple of weeks ago, and I asked what their reservations were about this property, and I asked if there was anything we could do to make her feel better about it. I explained to her, we would not be providing liquor. I explained to her, if the lights were an issue, we would be willing to put up some kind of barrier between the parking lot and her house, at our expense, so that it wasn't something that could bug her. She asked about noise, I told her at the time, we only plan on having one to two speakers, but if it is ever an issue, we are more than willing to downsize that, because the idea of having a family location is so that it's something everybody can enjoy, and that includes the neighbors. We have no intention of making this someplace that the neighbor is gonna find to be a nuisance. So, and I just wanted to come speak because you had mentioned, had you talked to her, and I have spoke to her, but she said that unfortunately, the place that was built across the street years ago has kind of put a nasty taste in her mouth, and because of that, she's not really fond of the project that we're doing, um, and I, again, I asked her if there was anything we could do to make that better, and she said unfortunately, there wasn't. Just because she's had a bad experience, she's not as open to hearing our side of things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment on this issue, the public hearing is now closed?
I think.
Is there any? What?
I think you did have another speaker.
Did you wanna talk? Go ahead.
I'm Janet Daly, and I live at ten oh nine Fifth Avenue, directly across the parking lot from the building, right next door. I've been here the last two times when the, uh, planning commission had their hearing and the city, you all were here, and you had your, uh, meeting, they were not here. They were not here. If they were interested in this at all, and serious about it, instead of just going ahead with their plans, they should have gotten the permit that they needed. They should have spoke with the neighborhood. I got a letter in the mail saying, are you upset with this, do you agree with it, or do you not? I'm not the only one that disagrees. The man that owns the three properties to the left of my house, which is to the east, he re- he is the owner of all three of those properties, and he sent a letter into the planning commission saying that he did not agree to it either. The traffic would be humongous, we are not interested in having a bar next door to us. He keeps saying there's not gonna be liquor, but yes, there is liquor. The one across the street from me, if they don't have it in the building, they drive up with vans or trucks and they pass it out in the parking lot. The lady that spoke just a while ago told me that they were, I, she mentioned, well, would it be possible to build a privacy fence? I said, how is that gonna cut down on the noise? How is that gonna stop anything from coming over here? How is that gonna stop bullets from flying? Because I've had gunshots, gun, you know, bullets going off across the street, where I've had to go to the back of my house for fear of going, them coming through the window. And she also said, didn't, she didn't say that they were, they would downsize, or they would do anything to adjust to my needs or recommendations. That, there was nothing spoken like that. I said that I was not at all interested in having them there because of the kind of building, the kind of company that they are. Not because I had anything against them as human beings, I don't. I have been at that address since nineteen eighty-six. I've had numerous companies live next door and work next door and come and go. But, the other night, when they had a little get-together, like he called it, uh, the last car out was facing my kitchen window. I was in my bedroom, getting ready for bed, I have two dogs, and I was kind of messing with them, and I saw flashing lights in my kitchen window. There, someone was dimming, and I can show you on a picture which car it was, because I took a picture of the cars in the parking lot. They were putting their brights on and then putting their dims on, and putting their brights on and putting their dims on. And they just kept doing that to try to get my attention. I didn't go out there and act like a crazy woman. I knew what they were up to, they were just trying to, to unnerv me, but I just said, you know what, I'm bigger than that. I don't care for that kind of attitude in my neighborhood. So, if they're going against all the rules to begin with, what are they gonna do if they do get a permit to be there after they've already gone and built everything in against everything that should have been spoken to and spoken of and had permits for to begin with? And I think that there were more permits that were needed, because uh, electrical work has to have a permit. There's, uh, there's things that are hidden there. And I've seen people go, coming and going, and I've heard all the equipment running over there, they did more than what they're just saying, they built a bar. Well, what is a bar for? A bar is for alcohol, isn't that correct? But they're not planning on serving alcohol? The people coming in are planning on serving that alcohol, at every party I, I ever went to, it was served alcohol, I never partake, partook of it, but the people did drink alcohol. But those parties weren't right next door to a house in a neighborhood. It's not just my house, it's the other three next to me, and there's houses up on Saint Joe Avenue. She said that they would be.
Time's up, please bring it to a close.
All right. This lady said that they would be having a patio built on the other side of their building, they had plans to do that also. And I said, oh my goodness, and that ma- means you're gonna have a speaker outside. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
A question, what, uh?
Just a second.
I apologize.
Seeing no other public comments on the issue, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion by council? Go ahead.
Thank you, um, the, uh, planning commission, what was the planning commission's recommendation?
Denial. Denial.
Planning condition complaint, denied. Yes, sir.
Um, I had one question, um, for Brian. Um, I noticed in here, um, you know, that it mentions that the conditional use permit would end after two years of unactivity, um, or if the property is sold. If the LLC or the business changes hands, does the conditional use permit stop?
Uh, it would probably depend on the nature in which it changes hands, if it's a, a merger of organizations, it would probably be merged in and, um, may, may continue. All right, it's tough to say until that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, you know, would they be required to tell us that the LLC changes hands or is sold? Um, you know, I just want to make certain that if it doesn't change hands, that it, the conditional use stays, you know what I mean? And then the other, I noticed a couple of times in here, it mentions, um, you know, that no modifications or adjustments, or, I can't remember the third definer, um, would be made to the property, that it would be used as is. It just doesn't sound like, you know, it's being used as is, you know, in my opinion, it's that there have been modifications or alterations um, to the building, so just wanted to point that out.
And I might have Clint come up and talk about the business licensing process, and if that wouldn't provide an opportunity to identify if, uh, if there was a change of owner, need for a new CUP.
So, to, to address Councilman Davis's, uh, question about the business license, the conditional use permit would run with the business owner applying for the conditional use permit, so if anytime Mr. Riggs was to sell the business or transfer, uh, ownership or interest in the business, it would require a new business license by that individual, which would then terminate the existing conditional use permit. And then to, excuse me, um, answer your question about the modifications or additions to the property, that language is speaking, uh, in reference to the structure, because it's located in a floodplain. Um, and so that is referring to, uh, the exterior of the building, so if the building was being, um, added on to, or could potentially alter the exterior, um, flow or direction of the water in that floodplain, so any interior work, um, all those are, all those are. Those aren't considered modifications, uh, they're interior and don't relate to, uh, a floodplain permit.
Okay, thank you.
Clint, um, can I ask Rook a question? So I, I don't think Brandon's here, but, um, March thirtieth, I spoke with Brandon, I think it was the same day that the stop work order was placed. He did tell me that the, um, permit that was needed for the improvements was, um, essential because of its nature in the floodway, but normally it wouldn't be required, if it, if it wasn't in a floodway. He had kind of told me that he said he thought it was an honest mistake, quite honestly. Um, there's been some other conjecture here that there should have been other permits pulled for electrical, I mean, can you tell, tell us what was issued, and I mean?
Sure, I, I'll try to answer that question, I, I, no master rig may have referenced to, uh, contacting the city initially, um, and I think that initial effort was an attempt to find out what direction was required, um, of the property, especially, that's the first thing uh, that anyone, uh, considers when, um, the particular use of the, the property is, what is the zoning for that property and what is allowed at that location? And so in meeting with, uh, Brandon, I believe, the discussion, although, um, I wasn't involved in that uh, initial conversation, was, um, what's allowed, what do I have to do, um, to get me to, um, that type of approval? Uh, Brandon is also our, our floodplain administrator, and so he's familiar with any changes to property, um, are required to be provided to the state, um, if it's located within a floodplain district, so I know he spoke to, uh, those particular issues, uh, the use, what's allowed, um, any requirements within a floodplain. I assume Mr. Riggs probably explained, uh, doing some interior modification, and the extent of that modification may have changed between the time, or, um, wasn't, I think, probably an honest air in the fact of maybe what's, um, needing permits. That's not an unusual situation in the building, um, permit spectrum. We place stop work orders on projects that either, uh, did not receive a permit at all, or went beyond the, um, allowable permit that was issued. So that necessarily doesn't mean that the, um, the project, um, was trying to skirt any potential, uh, permit issues, I, as I understand, um, I think the concern is, this particular use is not allowed within the zoning district as it currently, uh, exists, and so the hesitation to allow a property to be modified, particularly towards that use, I think is potential issue, is that if, uh, council was to deny the application, I think the owner would then need to, um, come back to the city to define an acceptable use, uh, within the confines of the existing, uh, zoning classification.
But there was a, there was a walkthrough of the building, am I correct?
Uh, there has been recently, yes.
There has been recently?
Yeah, and I, I don't believe there was one prior to just the last week or two.
Well, the fire department, the electrical inspector's been in there, the fire department.
But just here recently, correct?
Yeah, but, but, but that was after the completion of the stuff, but, but they were on board with knowing these were going on.
Yeah, so once the, the stop work order was issued, that then signaled, um, for staff to go out and inspect the work that was comple- or completed to date.
But there's no reason why the city would have walked through and not identified a, a permit for like, let's say, electrical or whatever that that wouldn't have been pulled properly, I mean, there was a, there was an assertion, maybe that happened, I just want to say that that isn't true.
Yeah, I, I think what we're looking for is, uh, whether or not the work, um, on this project or any project requires a licensed um, electrician or plumber, or whatever may be, um, required within the city code. My understanding is that the work that has been done to date, there was only minor issues that needed to be addressed that, that didn't seem, uh, to be a big concern.
Thanks, Clint.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I got a question, so kind of trying to gather all this in here, and so it, it's zoned currently right now as M-two heavy manufacturing district, correct?
That's, well, it's actually the, the property, if you look, um, on the illustration, I'd say seventy-five to eighty percent's M-two, uh, and the balance is, uh, residential, uh, R-one B.
Okay. Um, and so they're wanting the conditional use permit, um, so I guess my, I guess my question is, wouldn't you, before you would do any kind of work to a building, wouldn't you want to go ahead and get that permitted to what you were gonna do before you start any work and have something done as a project? And I'm not saying in their case, but just any cases from that, would you as a builder or an owner, wouldn't you want to wait and get this done first before you start any kind of work on your building?
Yeah, the zoning drives the use, and if the use is not permitted, then, um, one, the city would not permit the work, uh, to ensure compliance with the zoning code, so I think that's the main issue, if, if any work was done prior to this, obviously there was no permit for that work, because what was, what is being proposed for that location is not currently allowed, so once the zoning is approved, then that allows the individual to, um, get a business license at that location and then conduct business for that particular use, then we then determine the scope of work and permit that scope of work based on that use.
Okay, so if, if this, continuing my question, so whether this passes or fails, I mean, if it fails per se, then what happens to the owner in, in this situation, since he had already, uh, did all this construction and everything?
Well, the property itself could be, I, I assume, modified, I, I, I've not been in, inside the building to see how much work has been done, but if a bar has been created, you know, potentially the property could be rezoned for another use. An event space, the unique thing about event spaces, no matter what the zoning district is, an event space is required to have a conditional use permit, so changing the zoning wouldn't particularly allow an event space to exist at this location, but, you know, maybe it's a smoke shop, I don't know, you know, it could be.
Just any, anything, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just assuming when you, just a comment, but you came down to the city, you went through it and said, hey, this is what we're going to do, and you talked to, who, a building official, s- because we didn't have a CBO at the time.
Can you come to the microphone?
I apologize, most of my conversations have been with Brandon, I'm not sure how you say his last name.
Anoin.
Yes. And Jim Sherman, um, I have spoke on occasion, um, more, more for advice to which person I go to with Kim Hurt, um. There again, most of our experience thus far has been residential, this is our first time pursuing something outside of that, so I've spoke with several people on that level, um, within the confines of those offices between Brandon's and Jim Sherman's.
So you spoke with them, explained to them what you were going to do with the facility, and minor or major work that you were going to do, but those three things were sold to the planners, and then they didn't say, hey, don't do any work, you need to get rezoned.
So, and just the same as, I believe you said Clint, sorry, I'm horrible with names, had mentioned, we do believe it just came down to a miscommunication, our understanding was that if we needed to change the outside of the building or change, we were planning on making additions at that time, that were going to affect the floodplain, then we would need to pull those permits, but if we were doing something interior, that, that was not going to affect that permit, so we wouldn't need it at that time.
But did you explain to them the venue that was gonna go in there?
Yes.
An event space, that's what I'm trying to get at.
We've been open about that since the beginning.
Made that aware.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the formality or how this works. You know, and again, I've heard a couple of comments about, you know, after the fact, and I apologize, I mean hindsight's twenty-twenty, as Casey said, though, we entirely are in the residential space, so we've rehabbed several hundred houses here at different levels, we've never touched commercial, so it's like a live and learn thing. So right when we entered the project, we went down and spoke with, we spoke with Kim down here at City Hall and, and explained the scope of what we were doing, we wanted to do a rental hall. I had no idea that anytime you were gonna, until we spoke, I had no idea that any type of zoning has to have a conditional use permit if you're gonna do a, a meeting, a meeting facility, no matter what you're zoned, you have to have this. Again, it's just, we started it after we spoke to Kim, and again, it's just, it's just lack of knowledge on the process, so we started going through it, but the crazy thing is, what gave us this kind of blind confidence, I guess, was the, the previous sign that we, that we now says Paris Hall was Bethel Church. So when we walked in it, it was previously used as a church, and everything was laid out, the stage was there, the bar, which wasn't fully what it was now, but that was there, the restrooms were there, the kitchen area, the lounge, everything was there, because it was laid out as this church, and that's when we saw, we said, this is perfect, because it already has a similar, historically, it's had a similar use, so we just blindly kind of went at it, and then, and then approached City Hall's, what we needed to do. So anyways. So there were mistakes made on our part, but it's just lack of not doing commercial business, you know?
Hey, Finance Randy. The, when you were here first time, just a moment ago talking, it was, seemed like you had said that the project kind of snowballed out of control, became more than what you thought.
Snowballed, like, you know, as, as, as just being an expression, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things that a, well, first off, I would still say that I never believed that a bar, a non-structural bar, would have needed a permit. You know, it already had, it already had the, the plumbing there, it had the electric there, it had everything there, and we said, wow, why not just build this up and make a really nice bar out of it, so so when I mean snowball, it's one of those things, like as you start working on, you get little ideas, you know, it's not like we, it's not like when I mean snowball, it's, hey, we're gonna rewire this side of the building or stuff like that, it just, as you do it, you say, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this countertop on here, or I'm gonna put this shelf underneath here, you know, that's what I mean by snowballing, kind of like a snowballing of ideas.
Okay, and then, and you said just a second ago, there's already a sign on the building that says Paris Hall?
We, yeah, it's in the deck.
Okay, all right, I just, I just, uh, it's just very interesting that it would already, the work would already be done, it's already got a sign, there's no business license, there's no conditional use permit. Those are all things that are very odd.
But a lot of this stuff takes, you know, to get the signage done, it takes three months prior, you know what I mean, to, to, to get kind of the, all the walls rolling and stuff.
But it's saying that it's almost implied that you're gonna receive the conditional permit, is my opinion.
Once again, once again, there was some ignorance on. Well, once again, once again, there was some ignorance on our part, and I'm just, I'm going to be repetitive here, you know, I've done house after house after house. If, if I put a new roof on a house and you pull up and tell me, hey, you need a permit for that, and I tell you, boy, I didn't know, BS, you know what I'm saying? But when I've never, ever touched commercial before, and I guess, seen that it was a church, and then I seen that it was zoned commercial, I guess there was just a lot of assumptions made, and the problem is, though, just, I'm just saying, guys like me who have never done this before, you know, you don't know the process to walk, we, we just ignorance, I guess. And I know the old expression, ignorance is no excuse in the eyes of law, but the problem is, we still came down to City Hall and asked what we had to do, and nobody, until we had a conversation la- later in the, you know, in the process, no one stopped us and said, whoa, wait a second, a rental hall can't have, or a rental hall has to have a conditional use permit. Again, those are the things that now that we're talking about, it seems like, oh, hey, dummy, you should have had that, but, but when you're in the middle of it, it's just not some, I mean, nobody, nobody, nobody stopped us in the process, you know, so we just kind of kept moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have something to say. And I appreciate all the comments from everybody here, you know, you explained to us, you know, that this is your first time into commercial, and I appreciate your contrition there. I, I guess what it all comes down to is, like we spoke earlier, is this use appropriate for this location? I don't see this use as any more extraordinary or onerous than the previous uses that have been in that location over the last fifty years. Let's just get away from comparing this property to the one across the street, there's no relation. I mean, that's a, you know, I don't know, I don't think we should paint with a broad brush like that, quite frankly, because like I say, he wasn't even aware of what was going on across the street. You know, I feel like this is for the greater good of not only the neighborhood and the community, but our city. I don't see a lot of people taking chances in that neighborhood right now. And I just, you know, hate to be somebody that takes a commercial building when there's not a whole lot that exists in that area, and just, you know, sentencing it to an indefinite vacancy, when there's somebody that has a use for it that I think is appropriate there. I think there could be a lot of uses that would be inappropriate there, and I think this one's appropriate, quite frankly. So that's why I intend to vote yes.
And Taylor, I certainly can agree with what you're saying, but I think the key thing we're looking at here is this is a conditional use permit. Any use previous to this use was also received a conditional use permit if it was not allowed by zoning. So those things, you know, they preserve the public input and deserve that discussion, but that's, that's why we're having it, because it's conditional, so it's not grandfathered from property owner to property owner to property owner. It's based on the decision upon the council and whether it's a condition that we will allow that to be used for.
Any other questions?
We have one more. Are you gonna be, are you running it yourself, or are you gonna have someone manage that for you?
Well, we're gonna run it ourselves, but Casey is gonna be, she's gonna be our liaison for the day-to-day execution of that.
So someone that's gonna be there with that while it's open, during the hours it's open, and hosting those parties?
Yeah, 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 so, so she's gonna be there, so she's, she's getting a bump in compensation and some commission based on, so she's there at the, at the start, and then she also has to go there, you know, because there's a deposit collected and stuff, and to make sure there's no damages and no issues, so her, her job is that liaison to be there with it.
You'll have other staff there as well?
No other staff, no.
No staff?
No, 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 I mean, in terms of like waitresses or waitstaff and stuff like that?
No, just in general, if, as my kids were growing, we've gone to different facilities and so forth, and so there's always been someone there that, that would, yeah, that would be like the person that would be in charge of that particular party, if you're having multiple parties, or you're just having one per night or per day, one.
Yep, just, just one. The facility is, it's not that huge, somebody may, you guys have other info, you may be able to beat me up on this, I don't believe it's much bigger than four thousand square feet, so it's just, it's, it's not, it's not big enough, it's not like a main event where there's all kinds of stuff going on, it's just, it's just one little deal where, like, somebody's gonna grad- graduate or have an anniversary from work or something like that, and yes, Casey's job is to, is to be that onsite liaison, you know, stuff, hey, toilets plugged, brought a toilet paper, you know what I mean, just running around, just kind of taking care of all that stuff.
And if I may, we've had the discussion as well, that because there's been a question and a complaint about how late it would be, we have full intentions of me being there throughout the party to end the party and make sure that everybody leaves accordingly on the correct time. If I ever felt it was something that was out of my hands, Patrick and his wife are right down the road, of course, if it was something more complex than that, you know, if we needed to involve law enforcement for something like that, we would, but that's on a very far end of the spectrum.
And, and real quick, I'd actually deviate back on the business license, if there was excessive problems with like with the police department, I'm assuming the city can revoke a business license, correct? So if it was ever a, if it, if it did become a nuisance, right, is that correct? So, it's one of those things, if, if the police department or if the city deems this to not be appropriate for where it's at, or it is becoming an issue, it's something that can be pulled, pulled back.
And that's the business license or the conditional use permit?
Yeah.
And if the business license is pulled, would that end the conditional use permit?
I, I don't believe the two would be, be tied together. It, what's technically possible and what's realistic are two different things. Using a business license to stop a business, which isn't something.
Right.
I'm not suggesting that Mr. Riggs said anything wrong there, it's technically accurate, but withholding a business license for the manner in which a business has been operated is unusual and difficult for us to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
Last question, please. Plant, so what is the equation as far as occupancy, square footage, and parking spaces? Because I think parking is just definitely an issue here.
I, I can't speak to the occupancy code, the chief may have the numbers based on the square footage, and that's something the fire marshal establishes for that type of assembly space. Ninety-nine?
Pardon me?
Ninety-nine is the occupancy load.
Right, but there's, there's an equation as far as how much parking is needed for that space. I know retail businesses and all, other businesses have to have so much parking.
Correct.
Based upon the square footage and the occupancy, so.
Yeah, I understand, so the, the zoning code speaks to occupancy load, and then that occupancy load dictates the number of parking spaces required for that particular use. That is something Brandon did review as part of his initial assessment, and determined the parking spaces to be eligible based on the occupancy load. I, I don't know the number of spaces tied to that, but if this council has any particular conditions that they want to place on the application, they can do so. If it's a, if it's a time, as far as when they would like to see the operation cease at night, they could alter the, the occupancy of the particular use. The, the ability of the conditional use permit is such that the council has the opportunity to dictate how that particular use does exist at that location, above and beyond what the city code will allow in particular situations. So you can place stricter requirements or something in addition to what may currently exist within the application if you so choose.
What was, what was your staff's recommendation, not the planning commission, but what was your staff's recommendation?
Staff recommended approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
So what is the procedure to put a condition on the use permit? Because I'm, I'm inclined, I'm, as a businessman, I'm for business, but I'm also for the citizen of St. Joe, but I'm more inclined to support business if it's in the right place at the right time, and I think this is something that is probably, can be both of those, but I don't see it to where it can go on till midnight or one o'clock and disturb the people that live next door. So if there's something that we can do to put a time on there to where parties have to be over by ten PM, if that's something that can be negotiated between this person and the, and the residents, I'd be more inclined to, to, you know, to entertain how that, how that works.
Yeah, so it, it can be decided tonight if you want to place that on the ordinance itself, or if you would allow, want to allow the applicant to review in particular conditions, I don't, I don't know what those conditions may be if, if the council wants to place those on the application. I don't know the timeframe of when Mr. Riggs wants to go forward, if so be it, but I would assume that if the council's agreeable to amending the current conditional use permit in lieu of it passing, I would assume you'd find that favorable to have that discussion and then.
I think it's reasonable, at this point, since there are a lot of things that haven't kind of followed the traditional pursuit, I think it's reasonable to, to, to look at that.
I'd make a motion that the conditional use permit be contingent upon any events ending at ten PM.
Say that again?
I'd make a motion that the conditional use permit be contingent upon any events ending at ten PM.
I would second that.
Okay. We need to vote on that motion. Okay. What?
I was gonna ask you, seconded it?
Okay, we have a second.
Does it, Randolph?
Yeah, you had a second. Okay, so the motion is that we amend the document to say any functions end by ten PM?
Yep.
Okay, okay, all in favor?
Oh, you have to vote. You have to have a roll call.
We're gonna do a, a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Question.
We're in a motion.
He can discuss the motion.
What's your question?
Well, can we do two motions on that, or do we just wait and do that one, and then I want to bring up another one?
Yeah.
So we can do two of them, okay.
Okay, so roll call.
House?
Aye.
Aye.
Graham?
Nay.
Josindale?
Aye.
Novak?
Nay.
Randolph?
Aye.
Schoenberg?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Trout?
What?
Aye.
Okay, now, do you have a second motion?
Yeah, I'd like to do something with the fence, put a barrier up, a fence, so it can protect for the lighting and parking and all that, so is, can we add that to that conditional permit?
Well, it'd be a separate motion.
Huh?
You're making a separate motion.
Right, that's what I was asking.
To add a fence.
How tall?
Huh?
How tall?
How tall?
Say six foot, right?
Six foot?
Well, enough to where the lighting and the noise barrier, yeah, I don't know, what, what, eight foot? I, I don't know, ten foot? I don't know, I don't know what's gonna be sufficient.
Not a fencing guy.
Is there a second on building the fence?
I'd, I'd like to discuss the motion, but, because I, is it, am I correct in understanding that in some places the fence can only be so tall by code, like a side yard has to be certain height, that sort of thing? I'd like it to be the highest height allowed by code. If that's the motion we can make, I would second that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I think if we can make the motion in compliance with zoning code for the particular location, because at some zoning use of six foot is the maximum height, and I would encourage if, if there is a fence or some kind of landscaping or screening to buffer maybe the appearance of that fence as well.
Floodplain may include that, so we may have to.
So Mr. Riggs just said, we did mention the properties in a floodplain, so obviously any, any structure built in that floodplain will have to be, be able to build to standards that allows water to flow, so.
Green space.
Yeah, so not knowing that, and I think that may be.
You can't just put a fence up in a flood.
So council gives the staff the discretion to build some type of buffer to accommodate the neighbor's concern, that still meets floodplain standards.
Yeah, if it was maybe some kind of buffer that's allowed by code, whether it be a fence or a living fence.
You good with that?
Jeff wants to modify it, so.
Yeah, that's. Let's not be an objective enough, you gotta be more objective.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd modify that to the discretion of the planning and commission on the fence for the structure, is that what you're meaning? I don't.
Will work.
Yeah, with, with the addition of a condition within the ordinance, you can't technically just delegate that to someone else for a discretionary decision, that's why we have to have a, a very objective measure in place.
Yeah, just forget it, man, that's fine. We, we could use something such as a whatever number foot wide buffer area between the neighboring property, or anything that can be measured, basically, can be. Well, I mean, I don't know what the condition is of the floodplain and the fence and the barrier, so that, how can I make a motion on that? I don't know what. Huh?
Okay, let's, I would accept a motion to postpone, bring it back written to where we can do it correctly. I would accept a motion on that?
So moved.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I, I disagree, I, I, you know, we've had a woman who's come to three different meetings here.
I know.
We're trying to get this done. I'm not, we're not anti-business, I think it's a beautiful venture, but, you know, let's try to be fair on this as well, you know, I think there's, there's just a lot of questions here, and maybe postponing is the best answer, but, you know, I, I, I just, it's kind of befuddling.
Do I have a motion to postpone? Have no motion, so I can't postpone. With that, gentlemen, council members, with that being the case, we have one amendment to it. Other than that, you need to cash your vote on, I don't know what he's asking, the overall Carrie is five-four. Now's the time to finalize the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? We will be pulling number twenty. Any other items to be pulled? Clerk, please read the items remaining on the consent agenda.
Number six, Councilmember Schultz nominates Shelley White, thirty-three oh six, Renick Street, to serve as a member of the Tree Board for a term expiring January sixth, twenty-twenty-six. She's being reappointed. Seven, Councilmember Randy Schultz nominates John Mitch Jamison, fifteen eleven, Boyd Street, to serve as a member of the Tree Board for a term to expire on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-six. He's replacing Greg McVicca, whose term has expired. Eight, Councilmember Schultz nominates Elizabeth Latosi Sawin, twenty-two oh three, Golf Avenue, to serve as a member of the Tree Board for a term expiring April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-six. She will be replacing Michelle Cox, whose term has expired. Nine, Councilmember Schoenberg nominates Frank Still, forty-oh-one, Miller Road, to serve as a member of the Law Enforcement Center Commission for a term to expire on January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. He is being reappointed. Ten, Mayor Josindale nominates Timothy S. Lager, twenty-nine twelve, Teal Court, to serve as a member of the Planning Commission for a term expiring April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-eight. He is replacing Ben Burnett, whose term has expired. Eleven, Mayor Josindale nominates Josh Stevens, Transportation Planner, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. He is filling a vacancy on the committee. Twelve, Mayor Josindale nominates Max Sheber, Transportation Planner, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. He will be filling a vacancy on the committee. Thirteen, Mayor Josindale nominates Jacqueline Chance Gallagher, Deputy Director of Transportation, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. She is being reappointed. Fourteen, Mayor Josindale nominates Councilmember Marty Novak, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. He is being reappointed. Fifteen, Mayor Josindale nominates Councilmember Michael Graham, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. He will be filling a vacancy on the committee. Sixteen, Mayor Josindale nominates Councilmember Andrew Trout, to serve as a member of the ABCD Regional Planning Commission for a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. He is filling a. He is filling a vacancy on the committee. Seventeen, Councilmember Trout nominates Derek Breland, thirty-two oh five, Neighbor Road, to serve as a member of the Aviation Board for a term expiring April twenty, twenty-twenty-eight. He is replacing Luke Attia, whose term expires on April twenty, twenty-twenty-three. Eighteen, an ordinance emitting Division Four Stormwater Management of Article Two, Construction Repair and Maintenance of Chapter Twenty-Five Streets, Sidewalks and Miscellaneous Public Places of the Code of Ordinances Relating to Stormwater Management Regulations. Nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a farm lease agreement with Bill Bywater for the purpose of farming approximately thirty-one acres of vacant land located on the city of St. Joseph's sanitary su- landfill property. Twenty, an ordinance auth-, or twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three American Rescue Plan Act, State Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Fire Protection Grant in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, and an amendment to the general fund budget to appropriate the required local fifty percent matching funds in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars from fund balance for a total amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars to be used by the Fire Department for Fire Protection Service activities. Twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three American Rescue Plan Act, State Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, Emergency Medical Service Providers' Grant in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, and an amendment to the general fund budget to appropriate the required local fifty percent matching funds in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars from fund balance for a total amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars to be used by the Fire Department for Emergency Medical Services Activities. Twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the execution and submittal of the Federal Transit Administration, Federal Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three, Section Fifty-three oh seven, grant to provide transit operating assistance in the approximate amount of two million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-four, resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents for upgrades to the water protection data servers utilizing the master agreement with Showme Industrial Controls, Inc. Twenty-five, a resolution authorizing execution of change order number one with Lee Grover Construction Company for additional work on the Bodie Pickleball Complex Court Resurfacing Project in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Buchanan County, Missouri, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents to provide certain health services to Buchanan County residents. Twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a petition on behalf of the city for the dissolution of the American Electric Lofts Community Improvement District.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Davis made the motion, Councilmember Novak seconded the motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have some discussion here, I was going through this, did, was number twenty, is it?
It's been pulled?
Okay, so she went past it.
Yeah, I listed it, but I said the wrong number.
That's a point of order, so yes, it's been pulled. Okay. Any other comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Carrie's nine, ayes. Clerk, please read item number twenty.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a use agreement with Woodbat Baseball, Inc., for the use of Philwell Stadium facility for a term of five years.
Could I have a motion to postpone this ordinance to the next council meeting on May first, twenty-twenty-three?
So moved.
So moved. Moved it?
Schoenberg.
Schoenberg, who seconded?
Davis.
Davis? Councilmember Schoenberg made the motion, and Councilmember Davis seconded the motion to postpone the bill to May first, twenty-twenty-three, city council meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Carrie's nine, oh, it'll be postponed. Now, we're going to. I think we're down. Uh, clerk, please read item number twenty-nine.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Fund to use Neighborhood Stabilization Program Income Funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and the execution of a contract with Ray Contracting for a rehabilitation project at thirty-one twenty-one Rennick for an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
The city council received a mo-, uh, memorandum from city staff requesting this bill be withdrawn in order to allow more time to work with the state on any alternative mitigation, and to allow the city an opportunity to rebid the work to determine most cost-effective options. Is there a motion to withdraw the ordinance? Schultz, second. Trout? Councilmember Schultz made the motion, Councilmember Trout seconded the motion to withdraw bill three fifty-eight dash twenty-two. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Carrie's nine, oh. Clerk, please read item number thirty.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the execution of a lump sum contract with E.L. Crawford Construction, Inc., in the amount of seven million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, and an amendment to the budget to transfer funds in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars from the Capital Projects Fund to the Aviation Fund for the Rosecrans Memorial Airport Terminal Building Project.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Passes nine, oh. Clerk, please read number, item number thirty-one.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Public Health Department Budget and the General Fund to recognize money received from an insurance settlement due to a motor vehicle accident in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, and to authorize said funds for the purchase of a replacement twenty-twenty-two Chevrolet Malibu sedan from Victory Chevrolet in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and motor veh-, motor fuel in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Councilmembers, please cast your vote at this time. Passes nine, oh. Clerk, please read the bills for first reading.
Thirty-three, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Public Health Department Budget and the General Fund, and execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, both in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars for the Baby and Meat Tobacco-Free Program. Thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the General Fund and Water Protection Fund Budgets to provide funding for the anticipated deficit in the worker compensation accounts for fire, police, and public works and transportation departments in the total amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Thirty-five, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a permit to United Services, Inc., to place fiber optic telecommunication lines in seventeen locations throughout the city. Thirty-six. An ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for the Stockyards Tax Increment Financing Plan and Redevelopment Project, and terminating the designation of the redevelopment area of the Stockyard Tax Increment Financing Plan. Thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the submittal of the Fourth Year Annual Plan for the use of program year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thirty-eight, an ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for the North County Development Tax Increment Financing Plan and Redevelopment Project, and terminating the designation of the redevelopment area of the North County Development Tax Increment Financing Plan. Thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the budget to transfer the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars from the P- Police Sales Tax Fund to the General Fund to provide the funding necessary to meet the financial obligations of the Police Department Working Agreement between the City of St. Joseph, Missouri, and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Three for the time period of October one, twenty-twenty-two, to June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. City managers report?
Uh, Fukey Adams here. Uh, the police chief search is getting ready to, uh, transition to its more, more public phase. Um, the public, excuse me, public sector search and consulting has identified and preliminarily screened several candidates. Um, we will have a public interview process that's held on Wednesday, May tenth, and Thursday, May eleventh. Uh, there are going to be three total interview panels, one consisting of community members, another consisting of city leadership, and a third consisting of police department employees. And then, um, the candidates will also take part in a public meet and greet, so members of the public can, uh, can get introduced to the candidates. The beginning of that meet and greet will be for, uh, city council only, so, uh, they will have a, a session for the city council and then for the, the public in general. Um, of course, we are finalizing the FY twenty-four budget, uh, that should be coming to the city council within about, uh, the next week to ten days, uh, with the first presentations on that budget happening on May first. Uh, and the final item relates to the, uh, local tourism American Rescue Plan Act grant administered by the Department, Missouri Department of Economic Development. Of course, the city had submitted a grant application for improvements to Civic Arena. The, those grants were, uh, announced last week, and, um, unfortunately, the city's grant application was not among those that were, uh, that were awarded.
Is there any other business to come before? Is there any other business to come before, council? Like to now move to public comments. First person I have is Jim. Again, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record. Limit your comments to five minutes and wait until you see the timer before you begin speaking.
I won't take five minutes, I hope. I had some questions when I came in here, and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Carter answered those, I hope I can remember their answers. It was about economic development, and my concern was on the first one, on the AE Tire project. They came in and they wanted a TIF, or CID, excuse me, I get confused, here's where I get confused. You got chapter eleven, chapter one hundred bonds, you got CID, and you got TIF. I, I kind of thought the developers would come in like McDonald's and say, give me a TIF, give me a CID, and then the city would say, well, give me that other thing too, you want one of those. But that's entirely wrong, entirely wrong. The city customizes their development in order to do a specific purpose for the city, and that was to repurpose those tires to apartments up there. And I think that they are done, repurposed. And I thought that they were trying to, since you were doing, or ready, get away with the CID, that the apartments, they'd be kicking those people out and, uh, doing something different, but that's not the case. So, even though my communication was in cursive writing to the city staff, who normally likes to have it in digital format, I don't know what font, that or all of that, we were able to communicate. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the council, and I appreciate them, first of all, talking to me, and not just a citizen. And I appreciate the council's time also, by letting me talk. Cause bottom line, I think the council and the staff have the city's best interest at heart as a whole, and you don't have a specific, maybe you got a specific agenda, I don't know. But I'm watching. Not only me, but a lot of folks are watching on TV, and a lot of citizens are watching. So, we appreciate your discussion, because we kind of know how you think, we can't read your mind. The last thing I want to say is the shops, that. TIF, that is a TIF, I think, Brian. It's going to be dissolved, I think it was a success. We got a lot more retail shopping in St. Joseph because of this. Maybe some other merchants want the same deal, well, I hope, I hope they can get it or be as successful. But you're gonna get, the city is only gonna get two point six seven million dollars extra revenue, as I understand, now that this will be not a TIF anymore. I hope you find a good place for it, mayor, that will do everybody in the city good. Thank you very much for my consideration.
Thank you, Jim. The next speaker is Warren, is it Ingram? Warren, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the clerk's record.
My name is Warren Ingram, Jr. I live in Fraser, Missouri, and I hope this isn't a moot point, I hope the horse hasn't left the barn. But I'm gonna say what I rise to tell you, that this evening, I'm seeking your support and approval of saving the current control tower at Rosecrans Memorial Airport. It is my understanding a new tower is proposed to be constructed adjacent to the current tower, and once the new tower is constructed, the existing tower will be demolished. With the Missouri Air National Guard moving its operations to the north end of the field in higher elevations, thus abandoning many buildings in the floodplain of the Missouri River, what common sense is it to build new in this floodplain, especially since the current tower survived the flood of nineteen fifty-two and two thousand and eleven? The building currently has a vibrant cafe. It retains the ticket booth and the counter once used by regional airlines, Frontier, and Ozark Airlines stopping through St. Joseph. The history, the destruction of the history of this, the queen of the river cities must stop. I am not a native to the home of the Pony Express. In nineteen forty-two, my father was discharged from the Civilian Conservation Corps, and he and one of my uncles traveled to St. Joseph, four hundred miles, seeking employment, which they found at Rosecrans Field, which at the time was used for training of air crews by the Army Air Corps. My father and, and my, one of my uncles moved their families to St. Joseph, we lived out on the Missouri River, there by the, well, north of Waterworks Road, and I came with him, of course, I and my mother. came with them, of course, I and my mother. I attended Edison in Old Hosea Grammar Schools. I graduated Benton, nineteen fifty-eight. Benton High School has educated three generations of Ingrams. Except for my birth in western Kansas and four years in the Air Force, I've not had another permanent residence. I have a son and daughter living in Saint Joseph. We have a vested interest in this city, especially as pertains to its history. Urban renewal ripped the heart out of downtown Saint Joseph, from which it yet struggles to recover. Fires in downtown recent years destroyed a historic warehouse on South Third, as well as the extent Toodle Opera House. Only through diligent efforts of visionaries have the Missouri Valley Trust building.
Mr. Ingram, you're running through time, so I need to.
Okay, and the courthouse been saved. The city of Saint Joseph can afford twenty-seven million dollars for a new and questionable runway, or it surely can make good use of taxpayer dollar by upgrading to state-of-the-art control tower rather than the vast expenditure to build new, demolish the old. I will reiterate, sirs, the destruction of this, the destruction of the history of this, the queen of the river cities, must stop. You gentlemen have the power to accomplish such, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other business in this meeting, this meeting is adjourned.